All right, so good evening. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Rally Planning Board for Wednesday, October 25th. We have a couple, we have a new hearing and a couple of continued items. So let's start with the new public hearing. What I have is a notice of public hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, the Rally Protective Zoning Bylaw and the Rally Planning Board Rules and Regulations, the Rally Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, October 25th at 2017 at 7:30 in the meeting room number five in the downstairs of the Hall Annex Building located at 39 Central Street Rally to review an application for floodplain special permit and associated site plan for the proposed upgrade of an existing bridge after the fact located within the floodplain overlay district. The subject property located at 548 Weathersfield Street is also identified as the Cessers Map 11 Lot 4 William Herrick Jr. who resides at 16 Mill Road is the applicant and the property owner of the subject property that constitutes approximately 38 acres and is located on the outlined zoning district. The applicant is being filed, the application is being filed pursuant to Section 4.10 Floodplain Overlay District, Section 7.6 Site Plan Review and Section 7.8 Special Permit Review of the Rally Protective Zoning Bylaw. The applications, plans and relevant documents are on file with the Rally Planning Board and are available for public inspection at the Rally Planning Board Office, Town Hall Annex, 39 Central Street, during public office hours. There's our public notice. Who's our applicant?
No.
Mr. Herrick, how are you?
Good.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
That's probably the best place to start. All in favor? All right, so junior, so three in favor, meeting's open. Okay, so Mr. Herrick, what are we trying to do? You're our applicant.
We are trying to get you guys to be happy with our bridge.
Okay, so what have you submitted for today?
So here's the plan. Actually, the plan is in your packet. It's the first two pages of the 11 by 17 projects and I will check it up here as well.
So, just as a background, this conservation had some questions about a bridge that you, you-
Rebuilt.
It was a bridge there, it was rebuilt, okay. And it had been timber?
Yeah, we changed it to steel base.
Okay, and when was the original bridge laid out? Do you have any idea?
Seventeen hundreds.
It's a long time, okay, and-
It's designated H and W.
Disputed?
An H and W.
Oh, an H and W, okay, gotcha.
But the new bridge is where the cross marks are shown?
Same, 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 exact spot.
So there's another bridge over the miller, but that even changed or doesn't exist?
There's only one.
Well, it looks like there's something that goes over the river and then if another gets, it's one downstream-
There's one downstream.
Oh, okay, that's not, not the bridge, so the, okay.
Gotcha, so this bridge is here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it should be due, but this is actually an after the fact. They did the, the after work on the bridge prior to getting the approval from the conservation and it was actually the conservation agent who pointed it to the planning board in regards to the floodplain overlay district issue. So, we did have, they submitted for the floodplain special permit application and we forwarded to Larry for review. And he does, there is a comment or a report in your packet there. Letter dated October 19th where Larry actually outlines is, pretty much it sounds like you were in agreement, right, with the conservation commission's assessment?
Yeah, it's, I thought I saw Ted Barry, is he here tonight? He is. Not on that, oh, there he is. This is his plan.
Oh, okay.
I had a question.
So Larry, could you, could you mind giving us the summary of your review? Because, you know, this is not something we typically do in terms of considering the construction of a bridge. What are we, what are we looking for?
Well, you, I think, are looking to see if it complies with the portions of Section 4.10 of your bylaw. Sure, that would come under your review or my review for you. And that's what I did in the summary of my letter October 19th. I can kind of start at the second to the last paragraph on the second page. And this is the question I wanted to ask Mr. Barry, if he can answer it.
Yeah.
Yeah, on this, all right, is this plan based on as-built conditions?
No, there, it, Paul's doing the as-built when it's all stabilized and so forth.
Okay.
But I think it's been approved, I think, Bill Manuel had a sit walk with Brent. I think Brent approved it, I just don't think we have the as-built done yet.
Well, I, in review of this for the planning board, I looked at your floodplain impacts on that first page and for the board explanation and then the floodplain compensatory storage area that was calculated and that's 4.1041A of the bylaw. And that's really all that I felt that I had information to, to make a recommendation on. And the calculations seem appropriate to me. But the compensatory storage area, if it's not based on as-built conditions, then we don't know that it's really there. That's, that's where I'm at with that. So, you know, they provided it in calculations, they provided it on the plan, but if it's not as-built, it's only a plan.
Last night, I guess, the, the conservation commission did their, did their review nation order of conditions and that, you know, in regards to that compensatory area. They are asking, as one of their conditions, that the, or they note that they're waiting for the establishment of the stabilizing vegetative cover and submitting a request for certificate of compliance. And they were actually asking that we just reiterate that in the planning board's review. Is that something we could, like, do as part of, in tandem with the conservation?
It's kind of a little on the side of what I'm talking about. Here, demonstration for the board, they took this much area in the floodplain and they filled it. So they're required to put back that much area over here. And that's, so they took that area in and around the bridge and the hatched area that you see on the plan is, is the compensatory storage. If that compensatory storage, the bottom of it and where the top was in the bottom, if that's as-built, then we know that we have the compensatory storage. If it's just a plan to do so, then we don't have it yet. You could, I think, condition your action on condition of certificate of compliance from the conservation commission in the timeframe that he suggested. But add in that the compensatory storage should be resubmitted to you based on as-built conditions so that you, in fact, can say that you have reviewed for 4.1041A and that it complies.
Well, when will this as-built plan be, be ready or be prepared?
Let me play Tad here. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my name is Bill Manuel from White Lands and Land Management. I worked with Mr. Barry and Mr. Herrick to bring this proposal through the conservation commission. As you know, they approved it and issued an order of conditions. The compensatory storage has already been constructed. I had the opportunity to be on-site several times with the contractor while that was ongoing. We also involved Mr. Baselak and he had the opportunity to come out a couple of times during construction. When it was all complete and seeded, loamed and seeded and stabilized, he came out again. We all agreed that the work was done satisfactorily and the only thing we were waiting for is to give it a month for the grass to, to grow and stabilize the area. And then he would be, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but the instructions are to file a certificate of compliance at the end of, well, it would be just about now. So that work's been done and, to my knowledge, Mr. Baselak's satisfied that we have achieved the compensatory storage.
Okay.
If the board wants to approve this based on that testimony by Bill, as well as Thad's and do it based also on the condition that they submit a certificate of compliance to the conservation commission, as Brent's letter says, with the certification that the compensatory storage has been constructed accordingly.
Good. Is there any, a butter, is there any interested parties from the community that have any comment on this? Okay.
Just a curiosity, this is a bridge for farm use?
Yes.
So it's still under a farm?
It is, it's on his property, you know, well off the public way and he's using it for accessing his fields.
I understand, it's being sold, right, for development?
Not that I'm-
And been cleared in the back and park tested and?
We don't know.
Nobody's cleared out and nobody's perked it.
Yeah, as, as the board, we only deal with things that have been submitted, nothing's been submitted.
Oh.
I think you might have us mixed up with the lot next door, which would be Eddie Moran's. They've been perking up there.
So, any questions on that?
Okay, so- So Larry, you don't think that the, we should condition the approval on submission of an as-built plan, so?
Yes, I, I think, you know, that you can just be back on to, the certificate of compliance requires an as-built plan.
No.
So, or you can make it clear that it does and, and that the as-built plan certified that the compensatory storage has been achieved.
All right, okay.
I'll be happy to-
It's also not creating any redundancy for you, you're doing it already for the conservation commission.
I don't have the order of conditions memorized, but Larry, if you say that it's an as-built required, then there is.
Yeah, I, I don't know that there is in the order, but generally that does come up.
Sometimes with a project this small, we may ask for a waiver of the survey requirement, but perhaps, you know, the certificate of compliance would give you comfort that conservation commission is satisfied we achieved the compensatory storage.
Well, I just attempted to, I, I don't want great redundancy for you, I don't want you to do work that you don't already have to do. If it's something that, it's an injury inclining to do as part of your certificate of compliance, then I think it's something we should piggyback on like Larry says. But if it's something that you're not otherwise obligated by the conservation commission to submit, I mean, can we rely on Brent's certificate of compliance to, if you like? Yeah.
Condition 29 of the order of conditions, 29C, an as-built topographical plan at the same scale and the approved plan signed and stamped by registered professional engineer and plant surveyor.
That's required anyway. Okay, so, with that said, we, I think we're at the point where we can close the public meeting on this.
Well, you know, I just wanted to point out in the, in the town council memo, Brent's memo, he does say the property owner has completed the required activities mandated by the issued order that included the design and construction of a floodplain compensation area to account for the displaced floodwaters diverted or obstructed by the new fill. So, I mean, he seems to be saying there that the compensation area is adequate. That's how I would interpret that.
Me too. Right.
And he'll be asking for the certificate of compliance to make sure that-
Yeah, sure, right. Okay, well, I think we, we know what, what the vote would look like. We still got to close the hearing if that's where we're at.
Just let me ask you, Larry, is there any other issues under the floodplain bylaw that?
No, I, that, not that I feel that the planning board has any jurisdiction.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Second.
Oh, second, and all in favor, am I unanimous?
I can move.
Yes. Okay, so unanimous to close the hearing. So now we consider whether we're going to approve the application and it sounds like we have an approval in mind. We have some conditions we want to place on it and those conditions include the issuance of certificate of compliance by the conservation commission and an as-built pursuant to that certificate of compliance. We need to vote on that though, too, so can I get?
Well, we don't have to vote tonight. I, it's always been my preference and the board, I think, have generally done this. It's we, we wait till we see a draft, the decision before we vote on it. And I think that's, that's the more sensible way of how that works.
That's fair enough, I mean, we're likely going to be back here at this meeting for, to, to vote on it anyhow. So whether we vote today and approve it next time around or-
In our next meeting.
I think we'll try, so we're going to instruct him to put together a draft and submit to you, take a look at it. If you have any issues, address them before the next meeting and then we'll, if not, that's what we're going to be talking about at that follow-up.
November 8.
November 8?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you okay with 7:30?
Yeah. Can we kind of be flexible on the time?
Yeah. Okay, so we'll see between 7:30 and 8:00 if you don't, if you don't want to roll a little bit down. All right.
Good.
Thanks for your time today.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item we have is a continued public hearing on 104 Newberry Turnpike, special permit review for the hydrant regency dog count. What do we have on that day?
Mr. Bernhardt and Lou, Mr. Barry, is he here? He was, he, oh, there he is.
All right, so, do you have anything new?
Well, I think at the, at the, just to remind everybody where we were at the last one. You were, you and your wife were here at the last meeting and there was discussion about where this was. Like, Larry had issued a memo.
I've got responses to that memo with me, we can go through it.
Yeah, let me just recap. The, on, it was a September 1st memo. We met and discussed with Mr. Bernhardt on the 27th and we, you know, we had discussed some of the outline, or the outstanding issues that were involved. And I think it was brought to his attention at the time that, you know, that one of the things that, or Mr. Bernhardt had pointed out, that Mr. Peabody, who originally was representing, that a lot of the, the large scale of the original concept of three runs was actually Mr. Peabody's idea and that Mr. Bernhardt is amenable, or was amenable to reducing to one, one run. And there was also some other discussion about the, the covering of the, of that, of that road and using wood chips that would be periodically replaced and then having waste removed or picked up by truck periodically as well. So, did you want to pick up from there, did you have?
Yes, I just think it's better that Mr. Lou handles, yes.
We can just go through the comments if you'd like, we can go through Larry's comments and-
Okay.
We've, we've amended the plan, hopefully to address the, most of the outstanding items. I also have a plan here that is in excess. So the memo that, that is before you, well, the response has Mr. Graham's comments as well as our responses to those comments, we can just go through those. There's concern about the, the dog yard itself and the grading and some other, some other items. The first one being that the plans don't specify what is going to be below the park mulch. We're going to regrade that area and whatever native material is there, which is, we assume glacial till or materials that would be able to be left there, we'll cover with park mulch. We're not proposing to bring in special material for below that, it'll just be the earth that's there. There was also a concern about the, the location of this relative to wetlands and watershed protection districts that, that exist in the vicinity. The cover sheet to that plan has a vicinity map, which, on that map, we added, we added the scale location of the, the wetlands and, and the watershed protection district. The closest wetland is 400 feet or so from the, from the property, which is another 100 feet from, or so from the dog park, so about 500 feet away. First of all, and I think Mark talked about his waste management plan. The plan is to pick up and remove all of the, the dog waste. Obviously, the urine doesn't get picked up, but ends up in, in the groundwater and not different than, I think, anyone that has a dog that lives in this, the watershed, to the watershed protection district or near that wetland. It ends up in the groundwater and that, the, the time that it takes groundwater to get from, from the dog yard to the, to the wetland is like a rough calculation, about 100 days. So, it takes a long time, there's a lot of treatment that happens in that distance. I will say that if you have a septic system, the state lets you put a septic system which is designed to take waste, you can put it within 50 feet of a wetland. So, I, I am, I, I think we're, we're not creating a hazard to the wetland or to the watershed protect, protection district. Those things are very far away and, you know, I would be more concerned about the horse farms that are in the vicinity of, of that watershed protection district, you know, and other farm areas. This is-
Well, I think the management plan could address a lot of those issues and along with the management plan, the number of dogs we're actually having on-site is going to have an impact on that as well. So, there are a number of ways that mitigation can happen and I think, I see what you're saying. You don't think there's a lot of impact on the-
So he, he does have a management plan and I, and you, did you talk about it last, at the last meeting?
Well, I mean, let's just go ahead and sit here and consider the last time I was before the board in 2013.
No, it's not, really.
Yes, no, we should, because, because if you take in consideration what you approved in 2016, okay, if you look at the dog run right there alongside of the building for 314, 317 and 321, they have a dog run running right alongside of there. Now, if you compare my meeting in 2013 and the meeting in 2016 where the board approved that boarding doggie daycare place where I originally submitted my application before the board, the ZBA, okay, there was a number of, of environmental concerns pertaining to the boarding doggie daycare facility being right there at 317 and 321 Street. And like I said, at the same time, you have the dog run running alongside Batchholder Creek.
So, let me just back up. Did you talk about the dog management, the waste management?
As far as the dog poop, the dog poop is, everything is like recorded, okay? So you can go online, you can watch me outside with the dogs, I've been doing this over 10 years. I scoop the dog poop, it goes into a trash bag and then it goes right into the trash can. So, the dogs-
And then, so you do that and then you have a contract with waste management to come pick it up?
Yes, which I provided a bill to them, yes.
Okay, so how often is that?
Every two weeks they come to pick it up.
Okay, so there is a plan and again, we, we think that, that the environment will not be-
Well, how many dogs do you, do you want to have or? Okay. I average in worst between two to, at the very most, 30 dogs, okay? 30 dogs is during the holiday season, Christmas, Thanksgiving. But I, I nowhere near have like 30 dogs a day.
What's the average set?
The average probably daily is probably five to seven dogs. Seven being the maximum, we're to average it out through the year.
So I think I read that somewhere that the last, and that wasn't at the last meeting, that you would agree to limit it to 15 dogs, is that the case?
No, no, 30, because for 10 years-
No, you actually, we have your-
Okay, well, you know what, you have me on video, okay? Just like we have my meeting before the board in 2013.
I don't want to talk about the 2013.
We'll tell you this though, Mark, we're not going to hold you to the 15, okay? So let's move beyond that, but we, you know, we was discussing here, we did-
I get, yes, I get plenty. Um, you know, with all due respect, okay? The work that I do provides a- The work that I do provides, okay, all right, let's continue.
Plans don't propose any landscaping. We're proposing to leave the, the woods where we're not disturbing and there is landscaping that exists between, between the home and the gravel parking area and Route One and that we propose to keep, but we're not proposing to add any landscaping. Details of the proposed fencing should be shown on the plans. We've add, added labels to all the fencing and what the fencing is, so each fence is labeled with what the material is.
So you want to keep three dog runs? In other words, is that, that's, I think Larry has a recommendation.
Yes, yes. I can just interrupt for a minute, please. Small dogs are in one dog run because we have the hydrant regency for little dogs, fifteen pounds and under, little Chihuahuas, small dogs. And then the second yard is going to be meant for bigger dogs like shepherds, labs, stuff like that. The third yard, I would like to have a reserve because I also provide my services to the town of Bauxford and to the town of Raleigh as the town pound. So I need to have a separate quarantined area for the dogs and that's why the indoor play area will also be suitable for a separate quarantine area with a separate ventilation system for the dogs that we've been taking in. And I've been working with Raleigh for probably seven or eight years and I've been working with Bauxford for two.
Additional screening or the fencing required to be shown on the plan, we're showing everything that we are proposing to do. There will likely be a bit of noise of barking dogs from the proposed dog yard, which should determine if additional solidwood fencing along the proposed chain link is required around the perimeter of the dog yard to mitigate these sounds. I will point out that we're, you know, surrounded by commercial in Route One. However, we have around the dog yard proposed a stockade, wood stockade fence to address that issue. It says the plans propose no shelter provisions in the dog yard for extreme climate weather. There is no shelter here, but this building is available to the housed dogs. So the.
The proposed building is the.
That's correct. This proposed building is, the purpose of it is to provide shelter for dogs in the, in the case that they can't be outside.
When is that building going to be built?
I don't know what the schedule is, but it.
I, I just was aware that, I just, I thought I needed a site plan.
Are you going to get those before you get to building?
Yes, exactly. So.
I mean, you're going to wait ten years? You're going to do it a year as soon as you can?
I'd like to do it as soon as I can or probably maximum period is probably two years because I need to recover from my losses from two thousand and thirteen.
The plans provide only wall pack lights and separate buildings to illuminate the six parking spaces and the drowning area. The board is satisfied with the suggested lighting, you know, oh, the board? I'm not sure what that says, but the board's satisfied with the suggested lighting and do not, they don't write detail on the style coverage intensity of this lighting. We're, we don't feel like we need any more lighting than the lighting on the buildings. Right? You don't, you don't need lights up in the dog yard, right? Just on the building?
Sometimes I do like to play with the dogs at night to be honest with you, but it's within reason. I do videos at night with the dogs too.
Well, you're going to have, you're going to have a light. You're going to have lights on this building that.
Oh, yes, yes. I.
You can't have anything pointed toward the Route One really?
No, 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 no.
The requirements are full cutoff devices, so you can't just have floodlights or any, like Mark says, anything that.
Just get the whole rechargeable things from Home Depot and base them to the bank.
Yes, exactly, yes. I'm not going to set up stadium lighting or anything like that, so.
So these are all building mounted lanes. Sure. So it sounds like there is a little bit that we probably want to see on the plan if, if that's in fact proposed.
They are on the light, they are on the plan.
Okay, gotcha.
Site distances are not provided and should be in comparison to the posted speed limit and the estimated eighty-five percent speed. Appears that the utility pole just normally of the access drive may impact the site distance to the north. We have not done a traffic study, however, we did move that pole which was in the way. We moved it up the hill so it is not, it's not at that entrance.
But there's still a site distance issue, isn't there? I mean, it wasn't just the pole that was.
This wall.
Right.
That's right. And, and we're waiting for Mass Highway to tell us what they need for a permit to move that, that wall back.
Well, how can we, so I gather there's no site distances on the plan? So how can we approve this without that? I mean, we don't know what the site distance is, whether it's acceptable or not or.
Is the wall in the way when you pull up?
Yeah, it is in the way.
Yeah, it, it, it cuts, it cuts the site distance off. I mean, I, if I had to guess, it's like two hundred and fifty or three hundred feet.
But again, how, how do we approve this without knowing what the site, whether the site distances are acceptable or even close to acceptable? Because you have an issue there, it seems to me. I mean, when we did the site visit, you have the pole, I think you, you ameliorated that by moving the pole. That helps, but you still have a site distance issue.
I think the mailbox is an issue.
What mailbox?
The mailbox. That's how we fund by the.
Who's, who's mailbox?
Our mailbox.
Oh, well.
Because I'm a higher profile vehicle and I can see over that, but if you're in a lower profile vehicle, I have to kind of scoot out a little bit, but I don't go beyond the white line.
Well, my biggest concern with this project all along has been the site distance because it looked kind of frightening when we were out there on the sidewalk.
Would the same thing apply for one thirty-three location? Three seventeen?
We don't want to talk about that. You only, you look at the one horse, the property you're submitting.
So how do you plan to address that?
Well, we can, I mean.
Is it close? I mean, did you do any measurement? If it's within reason, you know, then.
Pulling that wall back will, will provide the site distance needed, so that I'm sure.
It's not adequate now then. Is it close now or is it like way off?
I haven't done a study. Well, so how could we approve this?
Maybe it's close, that's one thing, but it's way off.
I'm sorry, Rich, didn't you have the site distance on there way back then and, and what they would be if the wall was removed?
I don't think so.
I might be dreaming that.
You're thinking about Georgetown, I think?
No.
The intersection of.
Could be, but I, I thought it was this one.
I don't think so.
I thought you had them and because I, I remember you talking about removing the wall.
There was some discussion, perhaps not on the plan, when we did the site visit, I know we talked about where the.
Yeah, I was not there at the site visit, however, I do know that that wall is in the way of the, the site distance up the highway.
Is that state property?
Yes, it's state property.
So would that be the responsibility of the state to fix?
No, no.
No.
So, well, that's certainly something we'd want to.
Well, I mean, it could be conditioned that we provide the adequate site distance based on some study. I haven't been asked to do a study.
Well, you know, you can, you can put conditions on anything for, for anything, but whether those conditions are actually enforced or not, it's entirely another matter.
Is BLO still forty-five?
Whether, you know, that, once we issue our approval, we put conditions on things and the applicant doesn't always comply with the conditions, so what do, what do we do then? In the meantime, you've got.
Well, I mean, that's always.
We've approved a business with inadequate site distances. I mean, I think, I think we have to have better assurance than that.
Well, like I said, this is.
We need to know what the site distances are. We need to know how close they are to being adequate.
When I was before the board in two thousand and thirteen.
Again, I just want to talk about this.
Why not?
We're talking about this application.
Exactly, but my application in two thousand and thirteen, it was a discussion as well. So why was there no discussion about that in two thousand and sixteen? That's what I wanted to know, okay? Why am I being put through all of these things for all these months and for the two years that me and my family went without a home because of the board's decision in two thousand and thirteen, okay? It's not a picnic, trust me. This is a different case.
It's a different case? I'm not sure that you were in front of this board in two thousand and thirteen.
No, I'm sorry, it was, it was the ZBA.
That's right. Are you talking about your location on Weathersfield Street?
Yes.
Yeah, we had nothing, we had nothing to do with that.
No, not Weathersfield Street. It was Route one thirty-three across the street from Institution from Savings when we tried to get the house and the building.
Site distance is evaluated on every.
Yeah, we have an issue there as well.
Okay, so why didn't mean these have to do a site distance plan?
Because they didn't have the same issues as you have at this site.
You have a wall here that.
That being said, we're not discussing that site. I can't, I can't tell you what analysis occurred to, to a project that's not in front of us. So, and I'm not, you know, I'm not saying it's irrelevant, but it's certainly irrelevant to this discussion. So we're, we're telling you we can move forward on considering this, but something we'd want to see on this plan is adequate site distances.
Or we at least have to know what they are. We at least have to know what they are.
Know what we're approving.
And where does the state stand on it, Rich? Or you haven't heard back from them or?
I talked to Mike Formicella at the state. He was supposed to get back to me and I have not heard back from him.
How long ago?
It's been a while, months.
That's the state?
No, it is. However, I, you know, I have not been haunting him, so I think we should, we should, lead this as an outstanding issue and move, move forward. And I think we're going to find that the, the next issue is also the, the board should require mass dog approval for the existing curb cut and the change in use. I, I have not been hired to do a curb cut approval, so I'm not sure where that's going to end up.
Was any required to get mass dog approval?
Well, it's a little bit of a gray area, actually. A change in use does usually require a curb cut permit, but I've seen in instances where it's not a significant change in expected traffic that they don't require a new curb cut. I can't say where they would come down on this.
Well, I, I think that minimally we need an answer, whether they consider it a, a change that requires it, an approval or not. So, and I can only say that, I understand what you're saying, your scope of your representation doesn't include working with the state on this necessarily. So I'll go back to you. Are you addressing this?
Well, if I had to, I guess I will.
Okay, next.
So moving on. We recommend grade changes to the access drive and parking area as follows. Add a retaining wall, we've done that. Change contours and specifically in a, in a couple of locations to flatten out this driveway, we did that as requested by Mr. Graham. Due to the moderate driveway grades, difficulty in holding a gravel surface on these grades and the need to provide line painting for six parking spaces, we recommend the entire access drive and parking area surface to be paved. We actually do not want to pave it for a couple of reasons, although we're showing six spaces, this, there's not permanent parking here. This is, this is space and if you've seen the operation, I, I've been there, you know, a fair number of times. I've never seen more than one vehicle there at the same time dropping off a dog. So although we're providing six spaces, I don't think they need to be lined. I think it needs to have enough, enough room to park six cars and if we add pavement, then we have to deal with all this drainage and we would have to do something in the highway and, or near the highway and we prefer not to do that. We'd rather leave it, leave it gravel and to the extent that it needs to be maintained that it, that it would be maintained. We do have a paved apron at the, at the entrance and that's been on the plan, but we prefer not to, not to put pavement.
You, you're willing to do the grade changes?
Yes, we did.
How about just extending the apron on up to be, to just be on, just at the building, the northern edge of the building? So you pave that, that steeper ramped and keep the gravel from washing out on Route One. That seems reasonable. I, I think you talked about that at the last meeting, that you thought that was a good idea.
Okay. So the grading in these dogs, pens, we amended our grading to flatten it out as requested by Mr. Graham. So these areas we had, you know, more of a slope across them so that we had smaller walls dividing the, the three tiers, but we did flatten them. The walls got a little bit bigger or longer, but we did address that conflict as, as requested. In the drainage analysis, we found no calculation supporting the sizing of the roof runoff. We did size it based on the per test that we did for the septic system and we can provide that to, to Mr. Graham along with the soil test data that went along with that. Sheet four, recommend the six foot wide crush stone swale, call out six inch round and three inch stone. We've amended it to, to reflect that. This, this drainage swale, when our original plan came down and discharged above the septic system, we moved it over so that it is not discharging towards the septic. I don't, I don't think that we're going to have substantial flow in there. It, it only cuts off a very small watershed, so I, I don't think it's an issue, but we did move it. There are no proposed direct overflow provisions from the roof charge systems. We've added those. We've got from this recharge area, we've got an emergency outlet over here and from this roof recharge, we're, we're discharging to the trench as requested or suggested by Mr. Graham. And we've added check dams within that, within that infiltration trench as, as suggested as well. So I think that, I think that the remaining, and I don't want to speak to Larry, but I, I think we've addressed all of the comments except for site distance and, and curb cut and, you know, that's between, I think it has to be between you and the applicant as far as what you guys.
We've made some progress tonight. A lot of things, questions are answered and still a couple of questions to be answered, but it's definitely been, it's moving along.
Well, right. And yet I'm stuck with knowing that this thing has been around here since March.
February.
February. And, and Rich, this is the most complete plan, at least we have something to look at and make some determination on, but even this, because it's missing the information regarding the highway curb cut and the site distances, it's still not in a position where we can really do an analysis to make a determination. I think Mr. Graham wants to see some more things before we move forward. And at the end of the day, I will say I'm frustrated with the applicant because you seem to be moving forward with, in total disregard for what our role here is as, as an approval of the site plan. And you can seem surprised, but there's signage, there's improvements, there's cars, there's a temporary building that's not.
So how am I supposed to feed my children?
Sorry, I, I don't.
I know, I just think this is more personal than anything else, okay? Because you, three seventeen and three twenty-one in the floodplain district, by the way, with a dog run right next to Batchholder Creek, okay? And you don't want to talk about it?
That's correct. We don't, I, I don't, I frankly don't know what you're talking about, so I, but beyond that, we're here to talk about this site today. And what I'm telling you is through this process, you've had a couple of different teams, you've changed who you're working with, you've asked us to continue because we're, you're putting together different professionals to, to assist you with it, and yet, like I said, your business is moving forward and that's, I, I, my concern and where I'm at on this is that even if we were to be in a position to approve what my concern, and where I'm at on this, is that even if we were to be in a position to approve what you're proposing, I would absolutely insist that a condition of that vote include a provision that the Board of Select would not approve your temporary structure until you obtain a building permit to construct the building. Because my concern all along, evidenced by the fact that you are operating the business out of the temporary structure, that you'll continue to operate the business out of the temporary structure and potentially never pursue the building permit.
Okay.
And it's not just that, Chris. I mean, the changes in grade and the tiny walls.
You know what? I've been working on this for seven, eight months, all right? I'm moving forward here, and all you're trying to do is stop me into the tracks. That's what you're trying to do. You're trying to stop me and my business from moving forward, okay? In 2013, me and my family were without a home for two years, all right? And let me tell you, it is going to be an issue very soon, okay? A big issue, all right? Because all I want to do is just do my job. I just want to work every day. So, that way I can pay this gentleman here, and that way I can pay for the site distance. That way I can do what I need to do and be in compliance. That's all I'm trying to get at. So, if at the end of this meeting, I walk out this door and I continue to work, okay, so I can pay my bills and pay for all these upgrades, wonderful. I'm happy with that. That's it. That's all. I mean, I'm not asking for much. Mr. Williams has been with me since day one, okay? Come to every meeting. He's went through, made some changes, spoken with Larry. We're making progress today, okay?
Well, progress, this process isn't about slow progress towards an end. It's about reviewing a submission and making a determination about what's been submitted. And here we are, we pointed out that it was submitted in February, and we are in October, and you still haven't engaged an engineer to deal with the, what sounds to be like one of the major stumbling blocks here, which is site distances and curb cuts.
And also, let's reiterate that unlike the usual process where the developer requests approval before he starts operation, you went ahead and started your business without coming to any town board, including this board, so. Which puts us in a very difficult situation. But I was wondering if we could ask Larry if there's any comments about the remaining issues?
Yeah, please.
Well, I think the, I think the board is concerned about a real issue, you know, the site distance and how that can be improved. And I think that what this letter has said it addresses, I'd certainly be more than willing to take back and check off and reduce this, you know, six-page letter to a two and then keep working toward an end if we can, if we can get there. But I think that this board has made it pretty clear to the applicant that the site distance and the change in use permit or curb cut permit, or whether or not they're not going to require you to have one, is something they want to know. And I think the STOT is also going to be looking for an improvement to the site distance, so. I think that's your big nut to crack here. I'm not totally happy about the open dog yards as they are, but Rich has made his case, and if the board, and maybe ask the Board of Health if they have any comments on it, they're happy. I'm not...
I did actually talk to the Board of Health. There's no actual regulations.
Yeah, they don't.
So, yeah, they wouldn't offer any additional comment in regards to that, so.
It's, it only comes into play if you're within jurisdiction of Conservation Commission, then it is a what is it, Rich? Standard five or six? A use, a high...
Oh, HEPLA? HEPLA?
So, you know, I kind of wish that you could get these things covered, you know, so that you...
The dog yards?
Yeah, so that the dogs had some cover and the storm water is not running onto and off, you know, running off, you know.
The dogs have been running around for how many years out in the wilderness and everything else, running wild and in the snow and everything else? I mean, you know, I do get what you're saying, and I see where you're coming from, and that is something that I can most definitely explore. And I certainly appreciate that input and your concern. So, but when I'm out there throwing balls and playing chuckit, and I'm like, the balls are going probably thirty, forty, fifty feet up in the air. They're just going to hit the ceiling and come right back down, you know, so. But I mean, the thing is,
it's a massive structure. It would be a completely different application if we roofed that.
I may not want to look at that roof either. I don't want to see that building.
I think, well, the roof is something that we propose, we also propose it at some point on a single run, so the three-tiered runs covered, I could see that being a much bigger improvement than you were ever thinking.
Maybe, maybe a partial roof at some areas, so that way it can provide shade for some of the dogs while we're outside, certainly. But I would think or hope that some of the trees would also provide shade too, because I want to try to keep as much of the natural around us. But I think doing a partial roof would be okay too.
I think you can maybe sleep on that, reconsider it, because I can't see that there's enough information for the board here tonight. It's been pretty well expressed, not enough information for me to make any approval or motion towards saying on here tonight, but maybe I certainly will take the revised plans, review them, and get back to you.
And if you want to provide me a list of what you would like me to do, then I'll be more than happy to get down that list and check it off. Because this is what you guys do every month.
All right, so let's go to, one thing I'm, I'm at the point where I think we should consider closing the public meeting on this and taking a vote. Am I alone on that?
I think you...
I don't want to do that.
As Larry suggested, I think it might make sense for all of us to sleep on this, including the applicant.
I mean, there's two big things, the site distance, which is a big deal.
But I just want to say that I don't see how I can vote to approve this without the site distance being even known, even shown on the plan. And if, once it's shown on the plan, if it turns out that they're grossly inadequate, I don't know how I can approve this. And I also want, I think we should consider when we, if we do, are going to approve this, that what kind of surety or assurances we can obtain that will give us some right to think that this is not just a pretty plan, that the applicant is actually going to do the things that he's proposed to do.
Okay, so what are you trying to do? Should we be down here and not say that I'm not going to sign?
It's called a bond, a surety bond, a guarantee. I think it's, I don't know everything, but I think I had to get one. I had to put like, get a bond, guarantee, and I did the work over a certain amount of years. And when it's done, we're going to sign it off on, just so to prove that you're going to build the building or whatever.
And do the grading changes and the paved area where he's indicated he's going to pave. But, you know, again, to me, the site distance is just a huge stumbling block here, so.
It was from the very beginning when we first, when we first went out to the site in February.
We said, the site distance looks horrible, and you made it a little better by moving the telephone.
I have a hard time with that, and I'm only, I'm saying it probably isn't good, but, because I grew up on Route 1, and that's so normal. It's like, you guys like, I was on the ramp truck, and then saw on Route 1, but you get it running, and cars would come over the hill, and you get out of the way, but I grew up doing that.
And I'm sure that they don't want to be responsible for anybody being hurt either, and so.
Well, I think we'd be derelict in our, you know, obligations here, trying to approve this without knowing, you know, I mean. Because cars do drive very fast, and they come up that hill, and, you know, I could see something, potential for something horrible happening.
Can we continue to our next month's meeting with some? I just can't keep going on and on.
No, I can't.
Do you want to get some answers by the next meeting?
Well, I assume we have. Given that, right now, the big stumbling block to move forward on this plan is the site distances, and I think that that's where your next step needs to be. And if we don't have any progress on it at the next meeting, then I think we have to close the meeting.
Would we be able to get that done within thirty days, or should we take sixty days?
Well, here's where we run into a problem with the applicant, and I got to, I'll tell you.
We can report the site distance within thirty days.
Okay.
Certainly.
If you can say that, then I'm fine with that.
I can't get a curb, curb cut permit within thirty days, I can tell you that, but we could, it could be, you know, if he finds out that he needs one, it could be, you know, he could make a commitment to do it.
If he says we can do it, then we can do it. I'm just thinking if someone's busy and it can't be done in time.
Well, no, then, if, that's what we're looking for, is answers to the questions we have on the plan. We're not looking to revise the plan. We're looking to just address the things that are critical to our determination.
Do we know what the required site dis, the ideal or the...
No, because a speed study needs to be done to determine that.
Can we guess on that or make an estimate, or is that something you actually need to...
Well, it's forty-five right there.
Yeah, it's the eighty-five percentile of what people travel. We can do a speed study. I mean, it's...
I have no idea how they catalog these things, but they just did the intersections, so how, there's got to be some data available a hundred yards up the road.
How about that flashing speed sign? Where people drive and it tells them how fast they're going?
You know what you need to do.
I know what needs to be done.
Okay.
And if we have thirty days to do it, I'm not going to hold the process up. If we come back in thirty days and it's not done, then it'll be something that you and the applicant will have to talk about.
So, you can tell us what the site distance is and what it should be?
Yes.
Great.
And I would make some more phone calls to the state. You get a paper trail going on that.
Well, when I didn't mind, I went there like five times. I drove down to, I couldn't remember where it was, for a long time.
Arlington? Ridgewood or Arlington or somewhere?
Arlington.
Yeah. I get going there like every week.
Make a motion, we continue to our next meeting?
Second. I'm in favor, I just want to make sure there's no one else that wants to comment on this case?
Okay.
That would be the next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting. I would almost say, I would say first of December, the first meeting in December.
First meeting in December, so I'll give it a little more time, because we do have, going to be coming up in a week, which is too soon. We're thinking we're not going to have the second meeting, because it's Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so we're probably looking at December.
December thirteenth, I think, would be the...
Okay.
December thirteenth.
And we won't be having a second meeting in December, it sounds like?
Yeah, probably. Christmas Day.
Okay, so we, I'm sorry, we had a motion and a second to continue? All in favor? Then we'll see on December thirteenth?
Thank you.
Let's say eight o'clock, because we already have a couple on earlier, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so our next...
Thanks, Rick.
I'm staying.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we have certificate of vote for the Open Space Residential Development Plan Special Approval Permit for 42 Newbury Road. John Sullivan's the applicant. Sullivan, we've seen you a few times, and it looks like we're at the point where we can take a vote and...
Do we have a draft decision?
We do.
There is a draft COV, or it's a new package.
Oh, really?
Are you using the one I just printed out? It's not in the original. Yeah, I brought them out for everybody, put them on the desk. But once I email you, I'm not intending anybody print those out.
Oh.
I mean, I just figured it was too much paper, so I'm not...
Yeah, right about that.
Except for the one I gave you, but I also gave you a new one.
Well, so, so I don't have a, I have a copy.
Well, you should have the packet that I put right there.
Did you have the packet with an agenda on the front?
I do, I have.
Yeah. I have one, the sheets down. Maybe not. Doesn't look like... Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Have you had a chance to look at it?
Yeah.
Looked at as well, consistent with what we talked about last time?
Yeah.
Do you have any plans for the buildings and stuff like that in the...
Well, the plans, the...
Plans and elevations of the building?
Yeah, we made, and I can actually show them to you, but they're referenced in the approval. Here's the elevations, I believe.
So, this, I'm looking at the conditions for the open space. So, this says, essentially says that the open space is either going to be conveyed to the town, or if not conveyed to the town, a restriction enforceable by the town shall be recorded at the southern aspect in the Richard D.
We have this conservation restriction in the works.
Yeah.
So, it just needs to be finalized before we sell our first unit. So, it's in the process, along with the homeowner's documents and...
And the open space will remain in an open state will be solely for the purposes allowed by this section to maintain the matter that was shared with suitable for its intended purpose of passover recreation.
And that's also a condition in the conservation too?
Shouldn't, shouldn't this say that the restriction shall be satisfactory to the planning board or something like that? In other words, shouldn't we look at it and see what it actually says?
And I think that's, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think that's fine. I know Brent Beasley in the past has reviewed the CRs, and I'm not sure if the board was part of that, but...
I think we always have been.
So, we need to produce a package. We expect to do that, that it would be reviewed by the town. Whether it be the board and Brent or either of you, we expect to have that as a condition.
Yeah, the Concom does the most of the work with regards to that, but I think we would always like to have the ability to look at it, make sure, you know, that it makes sense.
Because the last time we did it was the golf course.
Yeah. So, how about if we say a restriction enforceable by the town and satisfactory in form and substance to the planning board? You could put that even as a parenthetical.
Sounds good to me.
Did you say that one more time?
After the words, "a restriction enforceable by the town", just put a parenthetical and satisfactory in form and substance to the planning board.
So, remind me, so this is, this would be a deed restriction, but you're creating this as a condominium, right? Okay, so this is going to be part of the common area, subject to a deed restriction?
Yes.
Just trying to think how you do that if you're going to... So...
The homeowners association would own it.
The home, right, right.
And there would be a conservation restriction on it.
So, the deed, so the conservation, you know what? We'll review it when we see it. I'm just trying to think, that goes, so the deed restriction goes on before the master deed? Because it affects the entire...
It would have to go on at the same time as the master deed.
Okay, so that it's senior to the master deed, and then the owners of the...
Yeah, normally they're filed like, right, right, one after the other at the registry.
Gotcha. Okay, so, no, but that, I think that's just consistent with what you're...
The architectural plans elevation.
It's part of the approval.
Specific conditions, number ten.
Number ten. That makes it easy for me to find, because I know how to count to ten. And the landscapers covered on something?
Yeah, those plans are referenced.
Yeah, I was just going to say the plans are referenced in the site plans in the middle that's being approved. And the landscape lighting plan, or the landscape plan and the lighting plan and the architectural, well, the architectural are taken care of in the conditions, and the landscape lighting is in the...
Those aren't the architectural.
Oh, that's not covering the elevations, number ten?
Number ten covers the architectural, but the site plans in the middle doesn't reference the architectural.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't have to. I'm talking about, that covers the architectural, number ten. And then the lighting and the landscaping are actually covered under the site plans in the middle. Sheets one of nine... sheets one of nine, two of nine, three of nine, landscaping lighting plans.
Yep.
Is actually part of the site plan.
But number ten.
That's being referenced in the.
Number ten just says architectural drawings presented.
Yeah, but that's covers the architectural occupation.
It's not very well defined.
You want some addition to it, or?
I would choose any.
You're talking about the specific titles and dates on, on those plans?
I would think so, yeah.
Okay, what?
Number ten. I mean, there's not that many drawings.
Yeah, we could, I mean, right, I mean, just, there's no problem putting in.
I didn't have them, or I probably would've written them in, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, it's a good point, I'll write that, I'll reference them, the date. Well, they were, you know, there was only.
Somebody got tired on them, so they should be in there.
Yeah. Let's make reference to them. And the condition, right, there?
I suppose, right?
Right, because I think there's a condition in there that says that the, that the buildings need to be built, you know, substantially in conformance with those plans, so.
Right.
And just reference the plans right, number ten. Can I raise a few issues about condition number eight, and specifically the second paragraph? I think in that second line, where it says, "The owner applicant provide", I think it should be "shall provide"?
No, "shall".
And then it says, "shall provide a recorded access easement from the public to pass and repair"? What is this?
Repass.
Repass.
Repass, okay, I haven't reread this. And then finally, it talks about north access parcel B. Parcel B is the open space parcel?
Yes.
Yes. Well, that's shown on the plan, so.
Yes.
Do we have to say anything about parking for the public? Did you agree to provide a parking?
Yep, we had to respond, yep.
And is, there's a condition in there that those be built?
Uh, where's, oh, in here? Where is that?
Perpetual conditions.
It's shown on the plan, right?
It's number eight, it's the first paragraph, number eight, the last two lines.
And yes, it is on the plan.
Yeah, exactly.
So, so does that, does the plan indicate that that's, that's for the public, that the spaces are for the public?
Yes.
I mean, should we say two vehicle public parking spaces, or that?
That sounds good.
Does it clarify that?
Yeah, I mean, otherwise relying on what's on the plan, and I don't have the plan in front of me, so I don't know.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to reinforce it.
Yeah, right.
Two vehicle.
Open space.
Oh, yeah.
Open space.
Two vehicle, uh, public parking. Parking for public access.
What number was that on there?
It's eight, the first paragraph. And proposed gravel surface, two vehicle parking spaces. After spaces, I think you just write for public access. Open space. As shown on the approved plan. So again, after spaces, for public access to open space.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit.
It's pretty mature for some reason.
It's no doubt.
It's amended today. Any questions about the amendments we're making? Nothing too, okay. All right, so we've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, you want to do it? Thanks for being so quick. It looks like a very interesting.
Oh, you did.
Can't waste a stuff.
Yeah.
Thumbs up.
So your neighbor's looking to do something very similar, am I right?
I don't know.
Okay, well.
I can only focus on what I'm doing. I got enough to do for the next year and a half.
That's all?
Yeah, I'm gonna go get it.
All right. The next item?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Good luck. So we're a little bit behind, you gotta continue public hearing. Douglas Stone, special permit, site plan review for the proposed accessory barn, greater than fifteen hundred square feet area on property located on the south side of Mill Road, also identified as accessories map five lot one oh four five zone outline district. So over the weekend, I know some of us went to a site visit out here, and we took a look around, and I think we've got a better idea of what it is, what you're trying to do, and where you're trying to put it. Because we talked, there was some discussion about potentially, oh, maybe you have two more sketches. I'll tell you one thing. The scale looks much bigger on there than it did on the plan we sold last week, but, but we knew that, I think. So where do you want to start with this?
Well, we, from the last hearing, you wanted to have a site walk
to review where the barn was gonna be placed in relationship to the whole site, as well as the house,
and why we placed it where we wanted to, and why we set the graves the way we wanted to, and what we're trying to accomplish as far as setting.
One.
Setting the, you know, the garage lower in relationship to the existing graves and preserving the trees to block the view. So we had, you know, a site walk, we had the twenty-five foot pole showing what it would look like, so at this point.
The twenty-five foot pole was intended to demonstrate where the peak of the barn is, correct?
Peak of the barn.
To the front.
Exactly.
And I noticed you mentioned that it was, you tried to situate the barn so that it's behind that bluff that's between it and Dodge Road.
That's correct.
One thing I wanted to ask you about, that bluff.
Yeah.
The majority of it, at least the upward slope, for lack of a less technical term, is on the lot to the front. It's not, it's not, it's not a portion of this lot, am I correct? So that bluff is on some.
That bluff kind of runs along two and three.
Two and three, right, okay, that, that, right there.
It's.
Kind of see it on the, on the, the plan in front of us, as opposed to bluff?
Yeah, the bluff is like right in this area, I think.
Right. So, given that I know that some of the butters are a little concerned about, you know, how this is ultimately gonna look, could you create any more buffer if you were to go further back from the bluff, and would that put you even further down, or where does that leave what you're plan, what you're planning?
Oh, well, the.
If you were to go back further, towards the back of the lot with the entire building?
That would, we would be in the one hundred foot buffer zone.
Okay.
We were trying to avoid staying out of the hundred foot buffer zone.
Right. You have no.
There's about five feet there, isn't that that, between you and the buffer zone?
Yeah, so, yeah, it's about five feet, yeah.
Let's compromise and go back two and a half feet. I know where you're going, because.
We, I'm sure I heard it from you.
No, you didn't hear it from me.
Done that guy.
Yeah, no, oh, right, so what we're saying is, is it potential, is there potential that you could, if you were to move it a little bit further back, and as a result have a little more buffer, but, you know, you got the roadway and the garage entrance out the front of that, below the peak. If you were another two or four feet back, could you get some, some shading along the top of that, that bluff?
Well, I could, and actually, if it moved up a little bit, if I moved it forward a little bit.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I could, I could get some, I can get some more distance that way.
What we're worried about is the cover of the trees that are left on that forward property is, were to the detriment of your site.
Yeah.
That's unfortunate.
I could, like I said, you know, instead of just going straight back, I can come forward.
Right.
And slide.
That's, that's near five feet there.
I mean, we have, the, the house itself, I mean, that's the zoning offset line, so you can see that, you know, we have, we have room to move this way with everything, without even impacting the septic system, which is what I don't want, you know, I prefer not to have to do that, but.
I mean, I recognize that all you're gonna, if you're really looking, you're gonna be able to see the peak, but, you know, it could be a house, and you could see the peak of a house too, so. What I'm worried about is if, in the future, somebody could slip some evergreen in there or something. And getting it a little bit further back may drop the grade of the, or a touch, and that gives you another foot.
Yep.
That's my only comment.
So we can, we can, we can do that.
So if he, if he moves the building over and back a few feet, does that open up space on the other side of the driveway for some sort of plantings that might help further?
Makes it better.
Well, you potentially get some lowers, so the peaks can lower, but I guess I was, I was asking the question, not, because.
Ideally, the planting should happen on the other guys.
Well, that's what I was, that was what I was getting at, I was trying to figure out where, you know, we can't tell. So what I was wondering is, if we do move this back, can you get some plantings on the front edge of your driveway?
Right, along, oh, yeah, along here?
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we could probably do some type of, you know, like a Leland cypress that grows really fast.
Yeah.
It survives permanent, and it's a very hardy and.
Just, just don't do anything that, that the deer are gonna like, like never bite you.
And I think we.
Well, I think that Leland is pretty deer resistant.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good.
Plenty of deer.
And I would make the conditions to do the planting after the structure is up to see where to plant.
Yeah, I'll, I'll show them on the plan, and then we can adjust in the field.
Right.
But that way, at least we have a starting point as to what we're, what we're, what we're trying to do. I think that's probably the easiest way to do it.
So, is there, we have some, I believe, an idea of an butter off of Bishop's Lane. Just give us your name and tell us, we'll bring you up tonight.
Are you speaking to me?
Yes.
Yes, so my name's Thomas Wogan, I live at eleven Bishop Way, which is budding this property across the street. And voiced some concern a few weeks ago about the actual structure, trying to understand what was actually being placed in there. The first question we had was the height, we really didn't get a story on the height just yet, so do we know the height restriction, or what is the height gonna be?
I think they told us it's twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five.
And they demonstrated that with the, with the post off of grade, and that was a little bit higher than the, the actual, or what you anticipate would be the actual.
Because I, the ground was, it was like two and a half feet.
Right.
Because of the ground.
So thanks for the consideration about the conditions, and that was our major concern, looking at this, it seemed to be an excessive size barn, that we're unsure of the height, so twenty-five does seem high for a barn. We're very concerned that this particular barn, at any size, especially now that it's forty-five, five thousand square feet, whatever it is, could be an industrial style building, so we are putting conditions, and to protect the neighborhood, would be conducive to the neighborhood to have some conditions on the style of bond to be placed in there.
Well, not on that, but that no commercial activities will be allowed. So the decision will say, will say that the purpose of the barn is for accessory residential uses, which is a legal phrase that has, you know, has some meaning, has a lot, a specific meaning, and that no commercial uses will be allowed, so that's, that would be the standard condition of these types of proposals.
And that condition would be consistent with the zoning of the district, it is not a commercial district. So that wouldn't allow somebody as a matter of right to later put a commercial use in there, just by virtue of the fact that they have the space. Okay, so it was absolutely limited to accessory use, to the primary use of the structure, which would limit them to collections, storage, that type of thing, but not any kind of commercial use.
Can you clarify the who enforces that?
Well.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Kind of the board.
Sure. Okay, so, you know, the town enforces it, how well it gets.
Who is the town?
The building inspector's.
Building inspector, that's all I'm looking for.
Okay, yeah, that is, this isn't an enforcement board, we just created.
No, no, I understand that, it's really just trying to understand.
Sure. And what we write up would be enforceable through the building inspector's office.
Yeah, okay.
And so you'd be able to go to the building inspector and complain about it, and if he rules against you and refuses to do anything, you have an appeal to the zoning board of appeals, and ultimately to court, if you really wanted to pursue that.
Thank you.
There is a.
No, that's fair enough.
We're here in a outlying district, in a residential area, putting in a much larger barn, that's what's listed. How many bonds of this size are in the town right now, in these type of resident areas?
Well, I don't know that we have that data available, you know, it's, it's not something that we catalog. I mean, I can only say that in the last five years, we've approved a barn within a half mile of this that's bigger, on a bigger lot, for a different purpose. Okay, that was a riding arena on, on Dodge Road, or Dodge there, yeah, across from the golf course.
And was that?
And there's another one there too.
Right.
Within the last year.
Oh, that's right, that, well, that was.
That was a small, that was about two thousand.
On about a four or five acre parcel off of Daniels, we moved a, a structure very similar, similar architecture to the house, accessory use to the, to the building. And I think that was probably three thousand, I don't remember the.
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, twenty-five hundred.
It wasn't, it wasn't this.
Anything?
Not this size?
The other one was on twelve acre lot?
Well, no, the riding arena was on, I think, twelve acres, now. The, the barn on Daniels Road was on five acres.
Okay, and this one's gonna be one point nine four seven?
Is that your, the acreage for this lot, one point nine?
Yeah, one point nine.
I can tell you this, though, that's not necessarily part of the analysis, how big is this site that they're building on? So we don't, we're not scaling it to his lot size relative to other lots that we've approved these buildings on.
So for us as neighbors, if you go back to figure three, is that photo to scale? Is that to scale?
That's the one I commented on, thinking, it doesn't look like it's to scale, because it does, does this, go through a few more, Kirk, because I think there was one that showed a little more detail on the.
Well, there's only, only up three on here.
As I said out in the field, that usually a render, a rendering or a pretty picture like this does the project justice, makes it look better than what it is. In this case, I think it makes it look worse than it is, because the trees are gone, and it looks like a level lot, it looks like it could be out on Route one, and that sort of thing. And it doesn't, when I got out to the site, I said, this doesn't.
You've gotta use your imagination a little bit to get there.
So the last photographs you're talking about were from the last project, not this project, the white pictures.
Oh, that was.
You know what, I, I will say, when I came in, I, Kirk, I did see a couple of pictures up here that were renderings of what I thought were the barn, but we've only, they just flashed up, and so maybe I'm wrong.
I think it was the condo.
Yeah, maybe, no, I, I, maybe.
That was the last project?
Maybe that was, that could've been John Sullivan's, and I was just looking at him scroll through some pictures, and that's where I.
That's the last, that's the last.
Okay, okay, right, right, well, and in my defense, there is, there's barn doors on the, on the game of living, that project as well.
They did have barn doors.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, so those are the only renderings we have. The renderings aren't plans that Mr. Graham isn't analyzing, they're not intended to be to scale.
Just like a concept plan, that's all it is.
So, and yet I don't think that that effectively shows the scale of these two buildings next to each other.
The, what we were trying to hopefully get is that the building type, and it's not gonna be an industrial steel, you know, type building.
Well, I think one thing we could do, similar to the project we just, that was just through here, and they all saw, we would condition it on the architectural renderings being consistent with what you've proposed in the plans.
Yeah.
And I think that that is where you'll find that he does have some detail that does show that he's, it's not gonna be a steel building, it's a, it's a building that's constructed with the same type of architecture that he was using in his primary residence.
And you'd have to submit those to the building inspector with all the necessary sprinkler systems and so forth, so.
What is the construction material that you're using?
Wood.
It's gonna be similar to the.
We're constructing similar to the house.
Yeah, and obviously the color will most likely match the house as well.
Same wallpaper material?
Same, same, same material, yeah. The idea was to highlight the windows that we wanna have along the, that one, those windows look like that, and the entrance going into the barn on that side to look like that.
There's like one thing, this is the cupola with a rooster.
Look at barn build, we can add that.
We don't want it to be higher.
My name is Ray. My name is Ray Perry. I'm the builder of this project here, uh, Mr. Stone's agent. And a kind of clarification, where the barn is, it could be a house. We could say house instead of barn. We could be another fifteen foot higher legally, without any special permit, and make it look whatever the way we want it to look at. And you'd look at another fifteen feet higher. We could turn the house into a garage and no special permits at all. We're not looking for that. This is a single story barn. Quite frankly, if you look at Lot Three below us, there's a seventy foot house going on Lot Three, thirty feet high. I know that because I just gave the guy a price to build it. Uh, you're not gonna see anything behind that.
Right.
Uh, it, it's, it's gonna be a very nice house. Uh, it's gonna be up in the eight hundred thousand dollars. It's certainly gonna enhance the neighborhood. Uh, and that's what you're gonna look at when you drive down Dodge Road. You're not gonna look at a barn. You're gonna look at that house. If you do see this barn, you're probably gonna see maybe, if you see ten feet, you're gonna see a lot with no vegetation in front of it. We're gonna keep the vegetation that's there in front of it. The only thing that we're talking about taking down is a couple of the big pines because they're sitting on ledge, on that knoll. So we don't want them falling down the barn. Everything else, we're gonna leave there. We're gonna, we, we wanna protect it also. If we have to do excess planting, we will. But you're certainly not gonna see, we're talking like a big old barn. This is gonna look like a, it blends in with the neighborhood. Uh, if you do see it, when you go up, you see it's a beautiful approach up there. You know, when you, when you drive up there, I mean, it's just a nice situation if you were ever gonna have a barn in the town. That would be a place to have one, I think, anyway. Uh, we're gonna keep it looking like the house, exactly like the house, color wise, no big tin can going up there, but, but a, a, a regular building. So, I mean, we're trying to really make it, make it look nice. We don't wanna look at anything that's unpleasant either.
You know, and it's, earlier I mentioned potential for some shading along that, I mean, that, I, I, that might be necessary to try to create. But I don't think aesthetically you're going in the wrong direction in the first place. So I, I, I'm not sure a row of trees is, is gonna improve it, maybe. I, I'm not sure, you know, it's your application, but that's just a thought that I think would...
Yeah, and I think, I think I'll know more once I, I, I move it and slide it, uh, if we can create that. Cause again, you know, Leland cypresses are, they're...
They're right.
Yeah, nice tree. I mean, they're right, you know, they're certainly, you know, worth putting in. They grow really fast and they're, they're nice.
Yeah. I mean, everything else out there, well, you can landscape it, but everything's naturally contoured. So maybe a, a, a very organized line of trees might not look...
No, no, we won't. We're not gonna do, we're, we're not gonna do that type of, of planting. It's gonna be...
Yeah, right.
It's gonna be a staggered to, to, to be natural. It's not gonna be a straight line of trees.
So, um, some of these conditions we talk about, to assure that these are, you know, any barn over fifteen hundred square feet, to assure that these conditions are listed, how, how does that go about? So to make sure that it's not a structure that's, a metal structure that is not aligned to the neighborhood. What do we do with that? What happens here? We get listed?
Well, so, so this board would reduce our decision to a certificate of vote, which says the conditions under which the applicant can move forward and obtain the necessary permits from the rest of the town. He can take that certificate of vote, go to the building inspector. He'd have to, it's the building inspector to approve plan consistent with that vote. So all those conditions are in there. Any approval that goes forward from there is gonna be subject to those conditions. So he would, you know, again, he's gonna be applying for a building permit to build the structure that we've approved. We're approving a structure that looks like the one that's on the paper. Therefore, that's what he can build. If he doesn't build that, then he's not, he's violating the, the...
We'll probably be going over the conditions there next meeting.
Right.
So you can come, you know, if you're welcome to, you know, entitled to comment and listen.
You know, our thought for us was, was that once we obviously feel comfortable that we are gonna have an approval, uh, the house is already, it's, it's a, um, it's a prefab house. So that helps, that's actually purchased and ready to go on the site. And in the meantime, we'd advance the final architectural drawings with all the details, windows and textures and stuff like that, um, you know, once we knew you'd get approval. So that's stuff that we're, you know, we're gonna have no problem doing.
All right, well, uh, I, I, Mel, I know you had a question and I know, I think we jumped ahead of you.
You answered it. Oh, you didn't have an answer for me. I asked, how many have you approved?
Okay.
And I also sent you an email and I didn't get an answer back.
Well, not to me, I don't think, but that's okay.
So have, has the board approved?
Oh, yeah.
What, I mean, bigger buildings or, or buildings of size?
Just buildings of size.
I think we just gave you two examples, right?
Well, I had the fifty thousand square foot building up on, off the Turbide Drive. That's a big building.
No, we're talking about accessory, accessory buildings in a residential, yeah.
The special permit, that's what I'm, I'm not driving for commercial.
I can only think of the two that I've, that have come through since we've, since I've been on the board, and those are the two that I'm pointing out.
I think those are probably the only ones on the neighborhood street.
The dog train, the train. It was a rebuild group.
Yeah, collapsed, it did collapse, right.
You don't, I don't even notice it. I noticed the tank, but I don't see it.
Okay, so, well, this, yes, we've been through this process before and we have approved other structures. But again, we don't do it, we don't do analysis to, and we certainly don't keep a database on what we've approved in terms, relative to the others. So we're not saying we can, you know, we do everything in five thousand square foot per acre. That's not the analysis. Whether it's consistent with what the use and, uh, character of the neighborhood and what impact it has on the abutters.
Oh, we thank you for the, the architect, the builder, the applicant, the board for listening to that, uh, trying for us to understand the impact, and that's what we're doing.
I, good, I mean, I think you got a good neighbor moving in. Sounds like, you know...
I am a good neighbor.
Yeah.
I've been in Raleigh for fifteen years. I wouldn't want anyone, I wouldn't want to have to look at something that's not pretty. When I walk on my front door, you're gonna come up to my property, I'll invite you, I'll go, wow, this is very nice, you did a good job here. Cause I am a good neighbor.
Okay, you'll see that.
You are, and we're trying to protect the neighborhood. Okay, it will be protected.
So, so I think at this point, though, we should probably take a motion to continue this hearing. Yeah, okay, great.
I make a motion, we continue to our next scheduled meeting.
That's November?
November?
December, isn't it?
Well, November eighth is the next week. We'll have a draft decision at that point?
You're gonna refile the plan, right?
I'm gonna make the revisions, but will the, will there be a draft decision at that point or...
I think we'll try to have a draft decision by next, next meeting, which we're currently using the eighth.
So what I'll do is I'll get...
Uh, discussion? Oh, I think, uh, part of our, before you would act on a draft certificate of vote, as we've discussed tonight, you're gonna need the architectural plans to refer to the SaaS scope materials and all that on file.
Okay, do we have those plans?
I mean, if, if, if the applicant feels comfortable that the board's going ahead with this, then as expressed tonight by your abutters, you need a plan to refer to other than that render.
Right, oh, okay, right, right, I understand. Cause we are gonna try to incorporate a, a condition upon the...
So we, we can't get an approval to have with the architectural plans?
Is that a problem?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Yeah, kind of. Is there anywhere we can get an approval with an order of conditions, like get an approval now with an order of condi... We're supposed to pass on this property tomorrow. That's our problem. If we can get, and I think, I think it, it seems like everyone's on the same page here. I think we're gonna, you know, approve this, this barn. Uh, and is there anywhere we can get an approval on the barn tonight with the order of conditions being, coming forward, let's put it that way?
You know what? I, I, as much as I, I appreciate what you're saying, you got a closing today, you don't wanna spend a lot of money on something you don't know you're gonna be able to do. Yeah, we, we're not in a position to give you any kind of a conditional approval. It's either an approval or denial. But I do think you can walk out of here knowing that we've addressed some of the concerns that the abutters have. I, I think with what you've presented, with the input that you have through, uh, you know, in terms of moving the building back a couple of feet, creating a little bit more room for buffer potentially. That's really all we're working with it, you know. I, I think that's the only gray area left.
So when is the, when is the next, uh, next meeting?
December thirteenth.
No, no, November eighth.
Eighth? November eighth. So, um, we could, the issue is if we can get the site plan revised pretty quickly. It would be developing the architectural plans in detail. That's gonna take, take some time and effort.
I mean, I'd be, I don't know, just speaking for myself, uh, I'd be comfortable conditioning it so he's required to submit architectural plans for our approval. In other words, allow them more time to do that part of it. We could have conditions, we could have conditions in the decision that says that the, uh, that the barn has to be, you know, constructed substantially similar to the house.
We, we have no problem coming back with the architecturals to show you.
Yeah, right.
If we get this... Issuance of building permit to come back with their plans.
What's that?
Part issuance of building permit to come back to the board with their plans that match this.
Yeah, that, that, I'd be comfortable doing that.
We can't get a building permit without the plans.
Right.
So...
You create a hardship, though, if you close on the property tomorrow and then you come back and says, well, if they're making the plans, the gentleman already closed on the pro, the property. So he's not enforcing it.
Which is a good point, and I think you, just by virtue of the fact that you just captured that way, he can't create his own hardship.
He can't create his own hardship, that's correct.
That's right.
So that's, we, we back up a little bit. Is there a financial hardship or do you just file for an extension? Are you losing money because you don't close tomorrow? I'm closing tomorrow.
Oh, no.
When I, when I'm closing on here, I think I'm okay. I think I'm okay.
That's what, that's what I was, I was trying to give you some comfort.
I've been selling stuff for forty years. That looks pretty good here.
We're not opening it tonight anyway, right?
Yeah, our only thing was to get the site plan in and then have time to work on the architectural, so that next meetings, we could have a condition.
And yet, when you come to the next meeting, we're gonna go through the conditions. Those conditions are gonna say, the issuance of building permit is gonna be conditioned upon him submitting architectural plans back to this board, showing a consistent...
Yep.
Architecture between the main structure and, and the barn and those render, and those proposed plans.
We have no problem with that.
Just so we understand that in your revised site plan, you'll, you will show the barn being located further back.
Yeah.
And you'll show your proposed landscaping plan, what, what trees you're gonna plant.
Exactly. And what I'll do is I'll super, I'll do that plan and I'll superimpose where it was before so you can have a comparison of what we moved it.
Great.
Just one more question, if you don't mind. Um, is the, the board given any thought to maybe okaying the barn if it was a little smaller?
Well, it's not our choice.
Well, it's an issue of property rights.
I think it was mentioned at the site.
I, I mean, our, our role is to, as Chris said, is to ensure that this doesn't have an adverse impact on the property and I think, on, on the neighborhood. And I think from what we've heard and what everyone has said, that I, I don't think it had, will have an adverse impact. So that, you know, can we force them to have a smaller building? I mean, I, I think at bottom line, that, that's property right, that, that we don't wanna infringe upon. You know, he has an unusual hobby, but you know, this, he's entitled to have an unusual hobby as long as it's a, an accessory residential use. That's how I feel about it.
I mean, if the size were impeding on those other interests, then I think we'd have to consider that as one way to, to mitigate it. But, you know, the height isn't excessive and it has no impact on the stormwater runoff and that type of thing. And aesthetically, I, I hardly think you're gonna see a great deal of it, particularly given that there's gonna be a significantly, uh, significantly big house out to the, to the front of it.
You'll notice that house more than the barn.
That's right.
And that barn, right.
Even a smaller barn, the height wouldn't stay the same because you need a certain width to...
And they're only saying the end. You won't be saying the length of it.
Right. And he could, if we said a thousand feet shorter, it couldn't be a thousand feet to the end closer to Mill Pond, which would have no impact on the aesthetic on the road. So I, I don't think, we haven't closed this meeting, and we haven't voted, but that's probably not a, a condition we're gonna, uh, ask the applicant to, to consider. All right?
Thanks.
All right, good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Continue to...
Oh, we're continuing this until the eighth?
Do you need a second to, to, Sean, make a motion?
I made a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, now all in favor of a motion to continue this hearing until November eighth?
All right.
All right, very good.
So we're gonna review our best plans. I'm gonna give you a letter, certificate of vote between he and I.
Yeah, and, and that's suddenly a pretty tight time for...
Yeah, it is.
I'll draft, I'll draft the format, either the form or...
I'll just copy your format on what we did at night and put the rest in.
We've done these things before, just, you know...
Well, it's a matter of them doing, I guess, the revisions, and you have to be able to legitimize your conditions to assert and to...
Dr. Missus, you're ready.
Well, we've, but we've done the special conditions before, so, you know, it'd be the same ones, but maybe adding one or two.
Okay, okay.
I can do it. I can do it.
Thank you.
He can do it.
But we don't want it to go to his head.
I don't think it would be twenty-nine years.
Yeah. So Matt, did you move your wife's birthday?
I don't know. I don't know what I'm gonna have to do to make up for this.
All right, so, uh, we're done with our, our public meetings, and we have, one of the items on the agenda tonight is, what are you, one oh four Newbury?
Three oh five.
I'm sorry, three oh five. Three oh five Newbury Court Turnpike. So, um, I know you've been in touch with the planner, and we've had some conversations, and I understand, I think everyone has seen what, uh, Mr. Saret's been trying to do here through Mr., uh, Mr. McCaffrey.
I haven't seen it.
Okay, so I'll let you explain to me what it is that they're, that you're trying to do. We have, we, we issued a certificate of vote on this site a couple of months ago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Matt Caffrey. I represent Ed Saret, three oh five Newbury Court Turnpike. This is the property that is, um, currently going to be built. We have a pending, um, medical office use. We have a tenant lined up, as it were, and we're here back again before you because we need to increase the size of the building a little bit to accommodate this particular tenant. Who is, and that's what's driving this change, if you will. And so the documents, I, I don't know if you all have a full set of plans. I don't have the, the larger plans here that show the sixteen foot enlargement. I never got a say here.
Not the, um, not the largest, but... I, I was like you said.
Okay, great. I have a building, uh, the center, okay. Yeah, here's the site plan. Shows the sixteen foot extension that we're talking about. So, uh, where are you? This is Newbury Court Turnpike. This is Vinton's Lane. That's a private way. Uh, this is the existing building. This is, uh, three nineteen. It's got Ademal Ma Associates and several other, uh, other vendors in there. And this is the building we're talking about now. This is the building that's, um, gonna be, uh, constructed. Now, prior to this, uh, the building ended right about here.
Concrete's already there, right?
Concrete's there, that's correct, yeah. And what we will need to do for this particular tenant is, is come out sixteen feet. And in that sixteen feet, we will house the mechanicals, the staircase, um, and, uh, it's gonna be set in the elevator. And they want a second means degress, and I, we think we know what they're doing. Uh, since it's a medical office use, it's gonna all be available for, for their patients to come right in at ground level. Access the elevator, straight up to whoever they're gonna see, back down again, that sort of thing. So it needs to come out this way.
And otherwise, their alternative would, if but for that elevator and entrance in the rear, they'd have to come back out to the front of the building.
Correct.
Which, uh, given it's a medical...
So it's a whole building for this, this tenant or the whole building? Yeah, that's, it's a good, it's a good point, cause I think some of the, you know, we, this has been a process for us, and we've been working, trying to figure out how we're gonna accommodate this particular tenant. So the, the things that have been going back between, I, I sent a letter over to Chairman Thornton, uh, on October fifth, sort of describing what we wanted to do. Um, Mr. Graham sent a letter out on October nineteenth describing some questions he had. This is all in the context of, is this a minor modification or major modification? And so we've been, obviously, we, we'd like to be considered a minor modification, uh, and so Mr. Graham has been communicating with us about his concerns. And most recently, Gateway Consultants, John Judd, um, sent a letter October twenty-third, and I hope you have, all have that, but that's the most recent letter.
I have read through, yeah.
So let me, if I can, I know it's late, I'm gonna, I'll do this in, in as brief a way as I can. I think, I think the main concerns when looking at the minor modification versus the major modification, um, we look at it as a, as a minor modification because there was an error on the plan that previously was before the board. It located, the prior plan located the edge of this building almost on top of the rip wrap, but that's not the case. What, what, and we're not really clear exactly how that happened, but the edge of the building is actually existing, is actually about sixteen feet, which is the area we're proposing to work in. Sixteen feet off the rip wrap, as you stand here today. So the sixteen, I guess what I'm saying here is that the sixteen... So, the sixteen, I guess what I'm saying here is that the sixteen feet we're seeking to, to extend the building is an area that already was slated for pavement, so there's no issue there with, as far as we're concerned, with runoff, stormwater discharge, that sort of thing. In addition, that sixteen feet, yes, it comes to the edge of the, to the riprap, but we've already, we've already, the building, when it was situated before this board, was already all the way up that, to that, that proximity of the riprap. It was a mistake on the plan, but it, for all intents and purposes, it, it was already there. I mean, that's, when this board was looking at this, that's how close the building appeared to be coming to the riprap.
That was a plan we approved?
Yes. Yeah, and we, I'm not clear exactly how this happened, but it happened, and we went out there and took a look at it. I don't know if you've had a chance.
I've, I've been out to the site, and, and somebody laid out a, a plan showing where that extra sixteen feet's gonna be.
Yeah, I thought it was sixteen foot, two by four.
Does mean that the front of the building was back?
No, the building is in the exact same location. I think what happened was John Judd over, you know, back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, when all this, a large amount of the site work was performed by Pitt Pipeline out of Waltham, they, John had just pasted and copied the site plan without doing an ASBILT for the exact location of that riprap wall. So, it's kinda like a speck on a construction project where it just gets copied and pasted, and pretty soon you're looking at, you're like, this has nothing to do with the project I'm on. And so.
Does it have this western line?
Yeah. You know, I don't know, we, we, you know, if you go out there, you can, you can see very clearly that, that riprap has not been moved, there's, there's plantings coming up through it and all of that. So what we'd like to do, and again, I wanna try to make this as briefly as I can, we're suggesting it's minor because A, that's really, really how it appeared on the prior plan, B, that area was gonna be paved anyways, so our, our view is that none of the stormwater calculations are affected by this. And C, in terms of the overall usage of the building, and there's been some confusion on that, and I wanna address that, that the, we know what the prospective tenant is going to have for employees, so there's gonna be a total of eighteen employees in this building. And we know this because they've told us how many they're gonna have on the first and second floor. And then we've done the calculation, we believe that a total of, based on the eighteen employee count, a total of thirty-one spaces is required here, 'cause when you do the math on the total square footage, you add in the employees, we come to thirty-one spaces, we show, I think we show fifty-two. Forty-eight, forty-eight, sorry, forty-eight on the plan. So when you add all these things up, my view is no harm, no foul. We, we, the reason why this is important to us, to get it done as a minor modification, is we're losing time here with regard to the construction season, and we'd very much like to have this approved as a minor, so that we can avoid the delay that might come with going through the entire process. Now, there are some other things that Mr. Judd addressed in his letter. I don't know if Mr. Graham has had a chance to look at any of that. Do you, do, Graham, did you have a chance to see?
I got his letter now ready.
Okay, so.
One-page letter.
I, I don't wanna repeat the things that he's saying, he's the engineer, he couldn't be here tonight, he had a family emergency, so he couldn't show up tonight, but, you know, we would, we would ask that you can consider this, for those reasons, a minor mod.
One thing I wanted to, do you have a copy of the CV on this?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have the same standard, number six, if the planning board determined that the proposed modification or deviation is insubstantial and does not materially affect the terms and conditions of the site plan approval, it may allow the modification or deviation as being consistent with the plan without further public notice? That's what, if we can come to the conclusion that this is insubstantial, then that is potentially our, within our discretion to allow. But, firstly, we wanna make sure that's, that is a condition on.
Oh, it is on this one.
So, so that's.
That's the standard we have to meet, and I will add that there was a reference to one of Butter, who came to a prior meeting.
Right.
But that, that, I don't know if you all recall, it was actually an attorney that showed up, it was John Smolak.
Yeah, right.
He represented someone, and I don't know if the board recalls, I, you guys, I don't think, I don't know if your minutes are available, but I believe he said that he had, he had no issues with this particular project. He, so he's here as an interested party, but I don't believe he objected to it.
Right, that's right, he was, his concern was Vinton Lane.
He was talking about Vinton's Lane, and he wanted us to do something for him on that, and that all kinda went away. So, so we're here before the board because we don't believe that there's anything going on with this sixteen-foot expansion that really requires us to go through that whole process, what we obviously understand.
So, you're increasing the foot, the square footage by, or the footprint by twenty-five percent, right?
No, no question about it, but in that twenty, in that percentage that we're doing, that, I mean, again, it's the house, it's to move all those things that would be strewn throughout the building into the area where the tenant wants them. But you're right, we, we are expanding the building, that's, that is happening, but it's.
But you're still meeting the parking requirement.
That's it.
Okay.
So, I, I guess, what I'm wondering is, does any of the proposals materially affect the terms and the conditions of the site plan approval? And Larry raised some issues about drainage and the relocation of the stormwater catch basin that's gonna.
Yeah, can I?
Yeah, please.
Can I just say what I wanna say?
Is that, what you're saying is what?
Yeah. Couple of things. This is the two thousand and four approval, Mr. McCaffrey.
Yep.
This lines up with that parking, just like your building lines up now. I do not believe that that included the sixteen feet. It's not material to me, but your sixteen-foot is back here, and this is the two thousand and four approval. So your sixteen-foot is back out here closer to this, this subsurface trench of drainage.
Well, again, if you go and you look at the actual.
Yeah. The subsurface, the only thing we have in is the old water separator. There is no leaching, and we can't move that. I, I know, that's what John said, and, and his plans are not clear about that, that it's just the structure and not this. But, I, I agree, you can move it, I, I don't have a problem with that. And I don't have, you know, I just wanna clarify what the board approved in two thousand and four, this is the plan, and it lined right up with that parking, that's the back corner, which is where it is today. But that, that is not where it is, that is never, that is not what's out there in the field and what is not out there. That was never built like that, that riprap that John is still showing there is not there, and it has not. Well, I, I don't care about the riprap, it's the size of the building, the building was approved in fifty-four by sixty-three. And I'm not, I'm not gonna recommend to, to board make this a major, I'm gonna recommend it's probably a minor, but, but that aside, I just wanted to clarify that, I don't think there was, I don't know the sixteen-foot error that you're talking about. I just don't, and, and hopefully, we're still approving.
It's just different, it's just different than what is projected on the plan.
I don't think so.
No, this one.
No, I, I think this one accurately projects, represents the existing approved building, sixty-three by fifty-four.
True.
And then they're adding the sixteen feet back here.
I see what you're saying.
That's fine.
I see what you're saying.
But it's still outside of the riprap.
Yeah.
Well, it's closer to the riprap, pushes it out to the riprap.
Right, I mean, right here, we're right up against it.
Yeah, so, the, the things that I brought up, I think that, you know, I'd like to just go over because I think they're important, but not necessarily demanding of a major modification.
Well, and, thank you, I appreciate, I think that's the determination we have to reach. I think we were all through this board when we had the issue of whether we have, there really isn't such a thing as a minor modification, it's an insubstantial field correction, but there's no category of minor mod. So either it's a field correction or a major mod. So, with, with that.
Yeah, so, you mean, so we've talked, it's a twenty-five percent increase. They've talked about their number of employees that they really say they, they have pinned down now, so that's good. Is it gonna be three total floors, or two total floors? Well, two floors above the foundation, so three total floors, yes. So, that really, not, not to say that the forty-eight parking spaces are not sufficient, they're, they're telling you that they are sufficient based on the use that they intend to lease it for, sell it for. But if it's three floors, you count all the floors, it requires fifty-two, thirteen parking spaces plus their employees.
Correct.
So, and you're saying you only have eighteen employees.
Right.
So thirty-one, so you've got forty-eight, so they're okay really with three floors. That, that's settled, because I didn't know if it was two or three floors. I didn't know the number.
To me, it was an issue that, if, if you weren't already there, didn't already have your parking spaces, that would be a reason, I think we'd have.
Is that lower floor occupiable?
Well, that's up to how they build it, I guess, you know.
Isn't it below grade?
No, no, it's a walkout.
Walkout in the back, yeah.
Yeah, it goes straight in. Slows down.
How many windows on the front?
No, uh, no windows, only windows are in the back on the lower level. So, the tenant is talking about having a, the blood draw down there, you know, a lab work.
Yeah, so there's less employees.
Yeah, couple of. So, so the building, the built, although the building expansions, they, they've actually reduced their number of proposed employees from forty-one previously to thirty-nine on Judd's plan, now to eighteen, so.
Yeah.
That makes, that makes it work, right? You know, I, I guess, I guess they have an overflow of parking, they're gonna go next door and go, let's build a path over there or something, you know, maybe you've got more parking, but, you know, it's, it's a pretty good size building square footage for, for forty-eight spaces based on the bylaw. Okay, just so the board understands, what you're accepting is the eighteen spaces for employees, and no more employees than eighteen. The, the site now will not have loading doors or loading docks, which I think was on there back in oh four. It was gonna be on there.
Back in oh four, we didn't know.
You didn't know what you're gonna do.
We had no idea back then, we were.
But, but now there's no.
No need for it with the medical.
Okay, no provision for it and no need for it, which I, I think in, in the decision would, should probably have just said how the board's approving this. And then lastly, we've talked, or not quite lastly, we've talked about moving a leaching area. That was shown on the plan as existing, I understand it's not.
No, it hasn't meant, but I, no.
So that can be scooted back without any problem. And the other two items are immaterial. I, I didn't feel like I should make the recommendation to the board unilaterally to do it as a minor mod field change. So I wanted to.
Well, it's not a field, it's not a field change.
It's not really a field change, yeah.
This isn't one of those. So, the question is whether, I mean, I think there is a distinction between moderate, moderate, minor.
So, the way it's actually worded here is like, whether it's significant or insignificant. To the original terms.
All the same thing, really.
Right.
Well, one is a process, the other is a.
But can I ask a question first? I mean, you don't have a plan showing what you wanna, what you wanna do, how you wanna modify your existing approval. It's, it's not on the plan, is it, or is it?
Yeah.
This is the sixteen foot.
Okay, so everything that you're proposing to do is on the plan?
Yes.
Already?
Yeah.
So you're asking us to approve this tonight?
This would be the modification.
Well, asking us to, to decide we don't need to approve.
Right, yeah. That you don't need to make it a major modification requiring a public hearing.
What he's asking us is to, I.
Well, no, he's at, what, what we're being asked is to approve this without a public hearing, essentially.
True.
That, I, I would, I think that's fair enough, but I don't know, are we really approving this plan? Or are we, 'cause we've already, the only plan we can approve is the one we approved with the vote. No.
Yeah, but we got a new board.
I think the determination is that, that there's no significant change to the original terms.
The whole, the whole issue is whether these changes are significant enough
Yeah.
for us to have another public hearing.
Yeah.
But the thing is, he can't get a, an occupancy permit until he brings ASBILTS back to this board, right?
Well, yeah, that, that's part of the site plan review, is that, that he get, you know, certificate of compliance.
I mean, when could we hold a public hearing?
Well, actually, I was, we were anticipating it, so I actually already run that, the first ad ran today, and to be on the November eighth.
Is that not good enough, November eight? I prefer, I, I think, you know, 'cause we got in a little bit of hot water several years ago about, about doing this, when the town's attorney questioned our authority to do it, and this is, probably is a more significant modification than that case was, so.
I mean, the only reason I.
So, how about if we just, I mean, I'd, so I'd rather err on the side of, of, of having a public hearing than not having one.
I think from our perspective, there is, I understand what you're saying, from our perspective, we have skill that needs to be ordered, we have a construction schedule, so the answer is, you guys obviously are gonna be able to do what you need to do, but from our perspective, it would be helpful, helpful, if this were a minor mod, I mean, or field correction.
But is it necessary, I guess, that's what I'm asking.
Well, it is pretty necessary with, you know, right now in weather wise, we, we wanna get our site work done, we wanna get our footings in, our concrete.
Yeah, I kind of appreciate all that.
So, so the one thing that I keep coming back to, not so much the insubstantial, because you're increasing the, the square footage by twenty-five percent, but is a deviation inconsistent with the current approval? And, and given that what you're showing us doesn't change any of our analysis, I'm wondering if we do, can treat this as insubstantial? So, that's, you know, that's my.
I mean, if they're not offering, asking any.
Nothing's gonna change between now, except that the public is gonna have the opportunity to come in here and also question this, which is one of the reasons we hold a public hearing.
So Larry, this change, in your opinion, is not gonna affect drainage?
No.
No. Parking will still be adequate, you're satisfied with that?
Parking will be adequate for that, given what they have offered to you this evening, as their max number of employees.
So that should be written in the approval.
And see, that's the, yeah, right, so if we did have another public hearing, we could condition it on the number of.
Well, we can still condition our approval on this. We, we have to, we have to act on it, we just.
Okay.
And that's what we've done in the past, right?
And maybe a determination that it's an insignificant or insubstantial change on the condition that we maintain the eighteen employees as the.
Yeah, or whatever else we wanna throw in. See, that's where, yeah, that, okay.
We're happy with that, we, that's what the tenant's.
Still, I think the.
Yeah, we have that for him, but the tenant, that's what the tenant's saying, the tenant's saying that's what they have employees. So we're, we're fine with that.
Things low, though, is it?
No, it's doctors, and then it's practitioners, and then the.
Laboratory systems.
They've got it all figured out, they, they know exactly how many people have to be in the building to make it work.
So it's like exam rooms, and, you know.
They're not connected with the people on one thirty-three, are they?
No.
That's partners, right?
Competition.
Well, your biggest problem is doctors getting behind on schedule, and you get more people waiting.
Yeah.
That's what happens.
Well, we should have plenty of capacity now.
Dentists are always on time, doctors are never on time.
So this needs a, a regulation for medical office space, or do we have such a category? In terms of parking spaces.
One day, I mean, with warehouse office rooms.
Really?
Yeah.
It's maybe professional, I mean, a system.
See if I brought it in.
Yeah.
Industrial warehouse laboratories are similar use.
Medical dental office clinic? Or you say lab, industrial manufacturing warehouse, storage laboratories?
Yeah, there, there's no category for medical clinics?
Well, medical or dental office.
Okay.
Or clinic, one space for each two hundred square feet of floor area.
That would blow them out of way.
I'm sorry.
I said that would blow them away, with twelve thousand square feet.
Well, you just made my mind up, we need a public area on this. Yeah, I think, I mean, if that's the standard, then you could.
Look at it if you want.
You can argue, ask for a waiver of that requirement if you want over it.
So, and.
Yeah, waiver is, if you think it's excessive, in this situation, it is available.
And I don't think we can waive requirements without having a public hearing, because that's substantial.
A big part of the building is just mechanical, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't need as many parking spaces, but you gotta have the. Yeah, he, we had it under industrial warehouse laboratories are similar use.
That's what it previously was, and then.
But if they have a medic, we have a category for medical clinics, that's the one that comes on it.
Yeah.
Now, maybe that's excessive, like, like a lot of our parking requirements are, you can request a waiver on that.
Yeah, because a whole floor of this is not gonna be, a whole floor of this, I think is gonna be lab, like a lab draw and storage, and so.
Well, okay, make an argument, yeah.
So you'd be close.
It requires a public hearing.
Forty, plus your employees fifty-eight, you got forty-eight, so.
But, you know, now we're into a tricky area, and I, I wouldn't be comfortable doing this without.
Considering the previous case.
Yeah, we were close, but I think we got, that changed, you know, now we gotta consider the parking analysis based on, you know, the, the correct, you know, requirement and use.
Well, we can do this, you know, we can hopefully open and close the public hearings at the, at November eighth.
Yeah, it's already scheduled for November eighth, so.
Oh. So... Do you wanna revise certificate of, uh, some kind of vote, some kind of approval document?
I mean, given that it was so recently, maybe just pull that out, brush that off.
Yeah.
You know, we'll take a little look at that.
We'll, uh, forward it to you later, and, or, how you look at it and make some recommendations.
I mean, I think at some point, both parties oughta, I mean, if we're both parties, yeah, Mr. Graham, just count those spaces based on the twelve thousand square foot under roof.
Do you have a twenty-seventeen approval?
Yeah, actually, I was just...
So we're just gonna take a vote to, you know, I think we're gonna continue, not continue, but we're gonna put it on, so we're, we're just gonna, we don't have to vote on anything.
We don't need to vote on anything, it's just, it's on our end.
So... It's all right, but I know, we certainly understand what you're trying to do. We just don't wanna put any of us in a situation where we're...
That's what we did last time.
So I guess, uh, seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Okay. Morning, well, he's got a lot on his plate at this point, but, uh, that's really the only additional, uh, analysis you need to do on this, is determine, you know, the parking.
We have, just have, it's...
We'll have Mr. Judd reach out to Larry and have that conversation, and, uh, be ready for the hearing.
But just, just, uh, maybe they should just, very briefly, a letter to you, request a waiver of the park.
Right.
And, and then they draft the COV to, uh, make it, to say how many parking spaces they have versus how many were required, that they, is that the worst way?
Right.
The difference.
So, and, I, I mean, I, can your tenant just give us a, does, does he have any kind of a statement about how many employees they intend to use, or?
Right now, we are, we can't even, we're not even gonna be able to mention the name of the tenant.
Gotcha.
We're in a very delicate moment, but we, we, we're happy to, I'll talk to the client about this, but we're happy to, uh, condition the approval on a limited number of employees 'cause that's what we've, we've been told, that's what they want. This is a long-term lease, and we're, as long as they're okay with it, we're okay with it.
Okay, well, thanks for coming in, which we could, was gonna...
Appreciate it, thank you, thanks. And this is yours, uh?
Uh, you can have that.
Okay. You like that?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
You, you guys are gonna...
No, I'm good, yeah, if you don't mind that, I'll keep it.
All right, very good, all right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, I have.
Thank you, I'll put it, I'll keep it in the file.
I have it there.
You have it.
Yeah. All right, so what else do we have? Kirk, what do you got?
Needs to be signed. Well, I guess, the one thing, yeah, I do have, uh, a sheet, and a keep shifting all this stuff. Oh, it's interesting. Uh, but we, I needed to ask actually about MVPC. Do you remember I was mentioning the MVPC about, um, that they were wanting to have a follow-up, uh, workshop for the public, for the, the housing production plan, uh, which actually I have, I'm gonna forward this out to you guys, and I'll, I'll drop you a hard copy of, um... Can we turn it on the eighth? Can we handle that on the eighth after you send us out the... Well, that's what I was gonna see, i- if, if, uh, if you guys, um, what they're asking for is kinda the same as last time, uh, start at seven o'clock and to seven forty-five, which is why when I did this three oh five Newbury Court Turnpike advertisement, I did it for seven forty-five PM. So if we don't do MVPC workshop on that day, then we could fit some of these other things in before, from seven thirty to seven forty-five.
Can we put the MVPC off to December when we may have a lot of...
Well, I was gonna, if, that, that's up to you guys, if you would rather to do it on December thirteenth.
It seems like we got a couple of, well, we, we, we put hyd, uh, hydrogen regency off until December thirteenth, right?
Yeah.
That's right.
But it would still need to be at like seven to seven forty-five, you know, 'cause we, we kinda cut them short last time, like, we did seven, well, we actually did seven forty-five in the end, I think, but you know, these, you know, they're doing these housing production plans for us, um, and I think they wanna finish up their project, and we're, part of the process is to come back to the town and...
So when are we have scheduled for the eighth? This, it's, uh, this and, uh, anyone else?
Yeah, the continue, all the, everything that's been continued, uh, the, you know, we'll have the, uh...
The bridge, so Mr. Herrick's Bridge?
Yeah.
Flood plane?
Flood plane is coming back.
The duck, duck stone.
Duck stone is coming back, but we, you know...
Three oh fives and those.
They might have been in this. Is there anything new?
Yeah. There will also be, no, no, actually, that's, um, um, it would be those three.
Yeah, I'd say we put them off.
Put them off to the thirteenth.
That's what I would, yeah, then we can give them the time they want. I understand what you're saying, now, they don't wanna commit, they don't wanna get the bums rushed, so we'll give, put them on for a day, and we have a, what we anticipate, we're gonna have a lighter schedule.
Yeah, well, I mean, they just have to understand where it's a, you know, we have limited, yeah, we have limited times, and, and we have a lot of projects going on, so...
Unless they wanna come out the day before Thanksgiving.
Send out the stuff that they're providing, yeah.
We'll see if they put us off till the third, uh, so let's, December thirteenth makes it, I think, would be good to let them...
Oh, and if you have my, here we go.
Does the board expect me to respond, or to supply them with a report on our review of Pangrove School? Are we just doing that for the conservation?
I think that, well, that's for conservation. That was directly requested. We can, I mean, once, uh, once you have, we can let the board members see it, but it's actually, it was requested by, it's for the stormwater plan.
It's a drainage, stormwater, grading, plan review?
Yeah, exactly.
We're not officially involved.
Oh, well, we, we really do have to end of this.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
I agree.
We'll do the minutes.
Did you get all that done?